Welcome, everyone, to this second night of our Budget Work Sessions. It is March 1st, Tuesday, 6:30 PM. Our first order of business is the Pledge to the Flag. Please rise and join me.
(inaudible)
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 And, like yesterday, we're gonna pick up where we left off, so I'll leave it to you, Steve.
We're gonna start on Tab 9 this evening, which will be the general funds component for the Parks and Recreation Division. We'll then go on to each of the different special revenue funds that are associated with leisure service activities. So if we start on page N1, I'm gonna ask Teri to walk you through her department, and we'll go from there.
Good evening. Thanks for listening to my presentation on Parks and Recreation this evening. The Parks and Recreation Department, as you all know, provides quality programming and facilities for the benefit of the citizens of South Kingstown. That's basically our mission statement. We strive to provide wellness programs, enrichment activities, quality facilities for indoor and outdoor activities for the general public. As you can see in our narrative, I go through certain bullet points, but essentially it's really to provide a sense of community and activity to bring the community together for various recreational purposes. We're overseen by the Recreation Commission as our policy board. It's a five-member commission, and we meet monthly. The Administration Division oversees the day-to-day operation of the department, management of staff, development of budget, capital improvement plan. We also administer the recreation software that enables us to keep track of every program and activity that we have going on year-round. The Park Maintenance Division is responsible for all of our outdoor and indoor facilities in terms of maintaining them and developing them. That's a year-round labor, and we have 13 baseball and softball fields, we have eight multipurpose fields for soccer, lacrosse, and other athletic activity. We have 17 public parks, including the Bike Path, we have the Town Beach, we have the Nature Center, the Guild. The Parks Division is responsible for maintaining all of those facilities. Our Athletics Department essentially is responsible for coordinating and administering any number of athletic programs. As we get into the budget, you'll see we have various programs such as basketball, softball, tennis, soccer, all variations of summer camps that revolve around athletics. We have an athletics supervisor that is responsible for the bulk of that programming. Our Aquatics Program consists of essentially the Town Beach and the operation of the Town Beach, as well as administration of programs that run through the Town Beach, specifically the Surf Program, Skin Boarding Program, those camps in the summertime. But it is one of our revenue generators, and it's self-sustaining, and as you know, it seems to be no longer a best-kept secret in the town. We have our Leisure Services component, and that consists of basically all of our events that we plan, all of our general camps that we run, adult programming. And just to make the distinction, we have programs within the Guild budget and programs within the General Fund budget. The Guild budget, which we'll get to hopefully shortly, has those programs that are housed under the Guild roof essentially. All of the other leisure activities, special events, fall under the Leisure Services program. And we have Creative Activities, which is our Stepping Stone preschool. Runs through the school year. Three- and four-year-olds are our customers. And we also have children's activities, Safety First, those types of things that we offer through the Stepping Stone School Program as well. And when we get into that, we have a couple of changes for this year's budget also. I won't go through all of them, but some of our priorities for the department, as they're noted in the narrative, they mention some of the items that we have already completed and others that we are looking to accomplish. We have implemented online program registration, which has been a great feature for those who can't get out, and it's a convenience factor, so that's been going very well. We expect that to continue. As I mentioned, the Town Beach has become self-sustaining, and we hope to see that continue through the next year. We're looking to maintain Stepping Stone's preschool license through DCYF, which we've have now for five years. Prior to that, it was through the Department of Education. Look down the list here, some of the... Sponsorships. We rely heavily on sponsorship for some of our programs, so we're looking to continue to generate dollars for offsetting the costs of some of the, mainly the community event programs, the Fourth of July, the Children's Fest, the Easter programs. Those are free to the public, so we look to utilize sponsorships in that way. Some of the other things that we've accomplished, the Skate Park Committee has been reestablished, and I know you're aware of the improvements that have been done there, and they continue to be very active. We have partnerships with the Boy Scouts and the Girl Scouts. They've done work on trails, which has been a great addition to us being able to utilize our Parks Division and hand-in-hand with the Scouts, really contribute to the community. And our Parks Division also has done, as they do every year, they identify needs within the facilities. Most recently, actually, most recently today, they established a temporary fencing at the dog park in order to be able to open the area up and rest the area where the large dogs are active. So we've got a lot of things that have occurred over the past year and are continuing into the 16, 17 year. Some of our performance measures, just to give you kind of a snapshot of what we do, you'll see in the narrative. Overall, we are projecting that there'll be a total of over 15,000 program participants just within the General Fund-supported programs. Now, to be clear, that some of those are duplicate numbers. There are folks who participate in more than one activity, but as we keep our statistics, those are the figures that we rely on. We offer new classes every year. The goal is to accomplish 80 percent success rate on the classes, which the success rate would be for the program to run. If we don't get enough folks signed up so that it covers the cost, we won't run it. And our aquatics revenue has exceeded expectations, and we've adjusted our budget again for 16, 17, to address the beach program, and we'll see some new information with regard to our program fees as we get into the aquatics budget. Some of the Parks Division performance measures, you'll see the number of acres that our crews maintain, over 420 acres, three seasons out of the year. That's 60 acres per man. We also show the weekly man-hours it takes to maintain our outdoor facilities at 200 hours a week. You've got 13 public playgrounds, which are all 100 percent certified in terms of safety. It's a high priority for our department, as you can imagine. We've got the number of park hours that are reserved, which essentially means rentals and/or activity through local leagues, which would look at 25,000 hours for a year. And you can see the breakout of resident versus non-resident. For the most part, our facilities are primarily used by residents. And then finally, some of our goals for the coming year. Obviously, one of the top priorities is to complete construction of the Community Recreation Center. We hope to be able to continue to work on CIP projects, particularly the pay-as-you-go items that are in the capital budget. We look to be able to transition some programs to the new Community Recreation Center after the half-year mark. We are also looking at attempting to at least establish the groundwork for a community-wide evaluation of the Parks and Recreation Program to better establish a long-term plan. We're looking to focus programming on teens and young adults. We find that that's the demographic that is out there that we could probably offer more for, and I think the Community Recreation Center will allow us to improve that area. Dog Park, we're looking to establish some solar lighting with an active community group that's currently in the process of raising funds. We've made improvements or are about to make improvements to the Town Beach with some shade structures and beach mats, which I know you're aware of as well. And of course, we're always looking to seek alternative revenue sources to offset the costs of the programs.
I think when we get into the budget itself, the 9-6 provides what the overall program requirements would be at the 1.851. It's about a 2.6 percent increase, but as I had mentioned last evening, a lot of recreation programs are based on participation for a revenue stream. So what I had Teri provide for you today is a look at both the aquatics program, the Leisure Service Program, so that you'll see each of the programs that we're operating, as well as those that generate income and those that cost dollars. And we'll get to that in one second. On 9.7, we looked just at the Administration. That's up about 1.35 percent. The Parks Maintenance Division is up about $21,000, or 2.4 percent, which is shown on 9-8. When you jump to 9-9, that's the first one for the sheets that we gave you this evening that's identified as the summary for the Athletics Program. So if you take a look at the sheet that Teri's provided, you'll see all of the 15 different programs that are operated there and what the return is in terms of the amounts of revenue that come in. Obviously, if those programs don't operate, or they operate at a lesser amount, there'll be less expenditures on it. So it should net that we're not looking at any increases in property tax supports, other than when we look at things such as the Administration cost. Administration is spread across all of the different programs, and you can see where the Administration has a negative value of 16.5,000. But overall, when you take all of the programs being maintained through the Athletics Program for the 16, 17 year, we're anticipating a positive value of $27,200 in income, more than what cost a program requirements are. And that's articulated in the summary sheet that's on 9-9. If there's no questions, I'd move to 9-10. 9-10 is your aquatics program, and as you can see with the aquatics program, there's really two subdivisions. One's the Town Beach operation, and we're looking at an overall cost of about $115,000, but we'll generate hopefully about $125,000. We'll net $11,000 there. As far as the aquatics program or the surf program, we're anticipating revenues of almost $30,000, with expenses for the instructors at $23,000. So overall, aquatics should return about $18,000. Any of these revenue excess pay down with the cost of the Administration and pay down the cost of maintenance. The last area on 9-11, which is identified, you'll see these are the programs that are run through the Leisure Service Programming. And overall, these are, in most cases, loss leaders. This is where our Fourth of July program comes from. We're anticipating that we'll lose or use about $19,000 more than we take in with that. But that is a community event, which I think is certainly something that the community's been quite proud of and supportive of. Each of the other program activities, whether it's the Child Pumpkin Fest, the Earth Day Nature Center, these are all different specialty areas that there are groups within the community that are very interested in. Overall, we're talking about expenses over income by about $17,850. But again, the loss leader there is what we put out as far as the fireworks display itself. That has become a much more expensive program as we go forward. This also doesn't really show you the true cost, because true cost would be all of the other services that we have to provide with EMS and police services. But again, it's a community event. It's probably one of the most focused community events that we have in our community. That's the Leisure Services element itself. Creative Activities, there are a number of programs there that are maintained through that property, in addition to the school itself. But overall, we're anticipating that of the $101,000 in cost, I believe that we're getting back in revenues about $80,000, if I recall, from that program. So, all in all, a $1.8 million component. And again, this doesn't take into consideration the Guild programs. Those are separate. This is the only part of the Rec program that would be tax-dependent, property tax-dependent. Anything with the Guild will come out of trust funds or user fees within that program. Are there any questions as far as the Parks and Recreation Division that's presented in the budget this evening? If there isn't, I'd ask you to move on to Tab 12, and Tab 12 is the Peastale Office Building Fund. With Peastale Office Building, there's nothing new or different here. We've owned that facility since 1983. It was first constructed in 1865 by a Peastale Mill Company. We've still used that for recreational programming to a limited extent, and we have as much as eight components that can go for commercial lease. When we first bought the property, the objective was to generate the rental income to be able to rehab the building. And certainly, over the 30 years that we've owned the building, we certainly have replaced soup to nuts in terms of the infrastructure itself, windows, roof, pointing, doors, heating system, electric system. But what we're looking at is that as leisure requirements expand in the Guild operation, this would provide us with an opportunity to move those to this location. I think I've mentioned at one time, we had a very, very large piano program, and at that point, we at one point thought eventually we would end up moving pianos in here and making that into a music center itself. Recreation Commission evaluates it on a yearly basis. If we need to take things out of rent at a future time, we would have the opportunity to do that. Right now, there's seven tenants. We're looking to have the eighth. We've got the renovations that are ongoing with the replacements of the windows. Once that's completed, there will be an existing tenant that will move into that space as well. What we're looking at is a budget that will spend about $94,000. Most of that will be generated through the income from the rentals, which is about $86,000. Self-supporting programs that operate out of PDOB are gonna generate somewhere in the area of $7,300. So overall, we'll spend about $94,000. We'll still, at the end of the year, even though we're spending some major capital dollars this year, about $60,000, I think it was about $68,000 for the improvements, we'll be still looking at having a fund balance around $262,000. So we're expecting to be able to continue that program without any type of supports from the Guild or trustee funds, and it's a self-supporting entity. If there's any questions, we can go over those. If not, I'd ask you to go...
I actually have a question. I have a question, and it actually goes back to what Teri was talking about earlier with the Guild. Do you, with the adult versus child participation, I know you offer adult classes and child. Would you say that most of it is child-focused, or like under 18? Or would you say most of the classes that you offer are for adults?
Are you referring to the Peastale Office Building Fund specifically, or just...
I'm sorry, no, I'm going back to the, I was looking at my questions that I wrote down earlier.
Oh, okay. In terms of overall, which are programming in general?
Right.
Across the board?
Correct.
I would say that our youth programming is probably, and Kathy can concur or not, is probably the major programming element.
Okay, and you said you were gonna reevaluate to see how you could kind of focus in on the high-school-age students?
Teens, yeah. We're working on teen programming.
And then you mentioned looking for other revenue sources. Does the Guild apply for or receive any grant revenue, or is that only through the Town that we would do that?
Typically, we've only done it through the Town, because the Guild fortunately has our trust fund, and we are able to be self-sustaining with our programs.
All right, so you don't have dedicated staff looking for any kind of grant revenue or anything like that?
Well, we do have staff not dedicated to grant revenue, but all of our staff will attempt to explore grant opportunities, whether they're $1,000, $1,500, or larger, for any type of, depending on what the program is. Sometimes there's the opportunity for, I think Citizens Bank had a grant program where we had received $1,000 or $1,500 for a particular youth program.
Right.
So there are opportunities, and I can't recall whether that program happened to be under the Guild account or the Town accounts, but we do encourage staff where we can to look at grant opportunities.
And provide cosponsorships on different events.
Right.
Well, if there's no questions other than that, we'll go forward to the Guild, which is on Tab 13. Teri, you wanna move through that one?
Sure. So similar to our General Fund accounts, the Guild's mission is the same. It's for us to be able to provide enriching programs to the community, particularly indoors, obviously, because it's at the Guild. The Guild's over 100 years old. It's got about 25,000 square feet of space inside. Consists of, as most of you know, there's a small gymnasium and activity rooms on the first floor and the second level. We have a variety of programming features, including the NAP School of Music, we have adult programming, we have youth programming, we have an art program, and we have a trip, primarily a senior citizen trip program as well. So all of those activities operate out of the Guild. The budget itself is supported through the trust funds at about 51 percent, and then the remainder of the funding for the Guild is through fees for the programming itself. We do anticipate seeing a shift in what the Guild programming will offer after the half-year mark, when there will be some transition of physical fitness programs that happen at the Guild that may be shifted over to the Rec Center. So that's probably more of a long-term item that we will do gradually, but for all intents and purposes, the, most of the programs that happen at the Guild are passive recreation programs. We've got, I think I already went through our accounts. We've got our admin and maintenance, we've got the front desk account, and then we've got our five programming accounts, seniors, youth, music, adults, and arts. Admin and maintenance, again, is basically the day-to-day operation of the Guild, budget development, upkeep, scheduling of activities, registrations, those types of things. As far as the front desk is concerned, we call that our frontline, because anybody who comes into the Guild, that's where they go first. We have customer support, customer service, switchboard operation. We've recently changed the role of the front desk person, who also has clerk responsibilities. We kind of merged two positions, so that they're also responsible for some financials of bookkeeping at the front desk as well. Our music program, again, briefly, is the NAP School of Music. We run that basically through the school year, several, probably a dozen or so instructors of varying instruments, primarily piano, that operates out of the Guild. It's very unique, I think, to our program. I don't think there's another Rec Department in the state that offers a music school, so... Our arts program is called Access to Art, and we have several different mediums that we offer. Pottery is a very popular program, and if you recall, we've shifted the pottery program over to the Peastale Office Building. Painting, all kinds of art classes that are available and very popular as well. Our youth programming consists of, we have camps that run within the Guild during the school year. Our vacation camps are part of the Guild program, because primarily they're inside. We work with the school department to try to identify other types of programming opportunities that we could have within the Guild. And we also work with the Police Department and Senior Services Department, again, to try to really pull together opportunities that might exist and use our resources within Town. Our adult leisure is all kinds of classes, photography, knitting, hula-hooping. There's an array of them that we offer, and we utilize independent contractors for these programs, so there's typically an 80/20 split, and they're self-sustaining. And we have our travel program, which is really our senior day trips. Occasionally, we'll do an overnight trip, but those are also self-sustaining. Those programs pay for themselves. And I think I identified some of these items under the general, that we establish fees for self-sustaining programs. We do market our programs. We are attempting to broaden our marketing arena to include social media and other avenues where people can easily see what we have to offer.
I think as far as the numbers, the numbers presented on 13-6 to begin with, I think one of the more important things to point out here is we're seeing a reduced budget requirement for the 16, 17 year. A portion of that is because this is the first year that there'll be no debt service requirements. So there's about $52,000 in reductions that are possible, because we've paid off the 20-year bond that was sold back 20 years ago, and the last year of payment was for the 2015, 16 year. I'll remind council that there's $1 million that's anticipated to also be bonded for the Guild purposes sometime in the immediate future. I say sometime, because what we want to do is to make sure that we do the proper planning on it before we get involved with that project to do the necessary needs assessment. We also do not want to have too many projects going simultaneously. Right now, we've got one program going, which will provide for the replacement of the elevator, so that we'll have proper barrier-free access to the Guild. Once we get that completed, then we'll do the needs analysis for the next bond issue in terms of what's going to be the most important issues to be addressed. Is it going to be dealing with the air conditioning? Is it gonna be with the windows? What are we gonna deal with? So that, we'll be starting that process later on this year, probably midsummer. Whether we're prepared to put the bond out in 2017, as is scheduled in the capital budget, or whether we put that off to the following year is dependent on what we're... or whether we put that off to the following year, is dependent on what our schedules look like. The front desk operation is really little change that, that's there. There is some personnel adjustments that are made, which reduce some of, some of our costs. Senior programming, as Terry has mentioned, because that's an 80/20 split, for the most part, these programs are, are all dependent on program participation. The revenues, I think, are also a key to take, take consideration of, and that's on 13-10, and this addresses what, what Terry was mentioning as far as the trust funds. Trust funds right now are generating around $380,000 of the cost associated with operating for the entire fiscal, fiscal year. The monies that were gone from reinvested income for the debt and cap, the debt or the capital budget, capital-wise, we're still taking reinvested income and putting $6,000 aside for use in general maintenance of the building, but the $51,000 that was in the 15, 16 year, won't be there until we get another bond issue in place, so most likely, that'll be vacant for the next two years. By having that vacant for the next two years, it'll allow us to set aside about $100,000 that will then pay for most of the cost associated with the elevator that we're gonna be putting in now. So, there's, there's a method to our madness, it's really trying to use those funds responsibly and not to over-utilize the reinvested income that's available within the, the trust funds. So, overall, you're looking at a reduction of about $53,000, but essentially, it's about a $1,000 reduction in terms of programmatic reductions for the 16, 17 year. Any questions?
I'd just like to ask how the pottery studio's going. I did have an opportunity to go in and check it out. When I was there at the tree lighting, they had an open house, and it looked great. I wasn't sure if that was taking off, and you were seeing a lot more kids coming in.
It's going very well. We've, because of that location, we've been able to have new, new classes that involve special needs population, because it is accessible on the ground floor, which is, which is a very key feature. We've also been able to utilize that space, the outer room of the, the ground floor, for other accessible activities, whether it's meeting space or something else that might be going on. But the art programs are going well. We do still have some art classes that take place at the Guild, but the, as for the pottery program, which is the most popular of our art programs, it's, it's, it's doing very well.
It looked great. Really, it looked, it looked nice.
Yeah, they're doing a good job. We have a great instructor.
Other questions, comments?
I was just curious, the summer programs and the vacation camps that you run, do we bus students in for that, or are the parents responsible for transportation?
The parents are responsible for transporting the children to the camps. We use buses to, for various activities.
Okay.
But they are responsible for drop-off and pickup.
Okay, so there's no significant transportation cost with any of those programs or anything?
Uh, no.
If there's no questions, we'll go to Tab 14, which is the senior services program. Karen, you wanna come up too? We're making you present the entire thing, Karen.
She was hoping we would invite her.
Why don't you take it away, Terry?
The senior program, the mission is really to be able to offer a single point of entry for various services for the elderly of our community and also our neighboring communities of Narragansett, and in the case of Adult Day Services, North Kingstown as well, to offer different, we offer transportation, we offer a nutrition program, we offer activities at the Senior Center and the Adult Day Services Program. In addition to that, we have a community information specialist who provides information and referral to other services for seniors within the town or, or the state, depending on what the needs are. So, really, the center provides access to a whole network of services for seniors, whether it's within the walls of the Senior Center or through other agencies.
I think that's a really important position, as far as the, what Terry's talking about, 'cause it isn't so much there just for the people that are using the center on a day-to-day basis, it's for somebody who's turning age 65, who needs to have understanding as to how they're gonna be able to deal with Social Security, how they're gonna deal with Medicare, how it relates to them and what the options are that are available. And a lot of the counseling goes on, where people will set up an appointment, and then they'll become participants in our programs there, but you don't necessarily need to be a program participant to be able to take those type of services, and those are very important for people that are at, at the age where they need to stop making those plans. It isn't a question of retirement, it's a question of how they're gonna deal with healthcare, how they're gonna deal with those types of things. So, the elder consultant that we, we've got, who does a fabulous job, does great service, I've had people from both South Kingstown and Narragansett complement the availability of the information and the resources that are, are networked through our program there.
That's, that's a very good point. We get a lot of people who would never step foot in the Senior Center, yet if they need information related to retirement, they will come in. Or volunteers, they'll start volunteering, and then they realize there's other services that maybe they could take advantage of. The town contributes about 51% of the total budget, or for the 16, 17 year, will contribute about 51% of the total budget for the Senior Services Program. The remainder of the funding comes from other sources that include Narragansett, where we share the Senior Center and the nutrition program, and also, North Kingstown is involved with our Adult Day Service Program. So, we have fund sharing in those, with those other communities. We also have some grant funds that we receive from the state, and also from the South County Community Action Program, that make up our, our funding source. I mentioned we have our four divisions, transportation, nutrition, Adult Day, and the Senior Center Program. The senior transportation program provides transportation for seniors who don't have it, in terms of getting to the Senior Center and/or shopping, critical activities that allow them to live independently in the community. South Kingstown's geographically very large, the, the van puts quite a number of miles on weekly, but it's a critical resource for those who have no other alternative, if they live alone, it's the only way that they're able to remain fully independent, is, is by utilization of the van. We do charge for, we do not charge seniors, senior residents to take the van to the Senior Center. There is a 50 cent charge for transport to shopping and/or other in-town facilities. We, the, the revenue generated from that is about $650. It's negligible, but, again, it's a valuable, valuable resource to those who, who need it. We also have a backup van that we utilize when the regular van is in service, or something might go wrong, or we are able to utilize that for day trips, other activities for the seniors. The senior nutrition program, this is a federally funded program through the Title III C program, and we provide meals, daily meals, at noon to seniors. It's a suggested donation of $3.50, but that's just what it is, a suggested donation. So, we take in whatever people can afford and serve about 50 meals a day under the roof of, of the Senior Center. We're also the staging site for the Meals on Wheels program. They come into the Senior Center, volunteers come, and then distribute them to the, to the folks in town that need them. A point of information also is that because this is a federal, federally funded program, the food that is provided is actually, the cost is not included in our budget, because it's funded elsewhere through West Bay Community Action, at a cost of about $35,000. So, that's, that's what the donations offset. Any donations we get go right back to the Community Action Program. We share this program with the Town of Narragansett, and in your narratives, you'll see a table that illustrates over a four-year period, the number of meals that we've provided to both South Kingstown and Narragansett residents. That's the formula we use to establish the contribution from both towns. It's over a four-year stretch, so that it evens out the, any spikes that might occur for whatever reason from one year to the next, and you'll note that it's about a 70/30 split, South Kingstown, Narragansett. So, the total program is $122,000 approximately, and the town's portion is $117,000, split between, 70/30 between South Kingstown and Narragansett. Just one more point I'd make about the nutrition program. People come for the lunch, but it's also another vehicle to get people into the building, and then they're exposed to other services that, that we can provide, so that's kind of a critical piece for, for folks who might not otherwise join us. The Adult Day Services Program, if you recall, last year, the program was on the cusp of viability in terms of funding. We had low client numbers as compared with previous years. There was also another organization that opened up in town that was providing the service. This council approved, moving forward, another year of service because of the information that was gathered in terms of whether or not this other day service facility would be viable going forward. That program has since closed its doors, so we thank you for giving us another year to be able to provide the service. Excuse me, otherwise, we would, there'd be a lot of people, caregivers and seniors, without access to being able to remain in their own homes and service during the day. We still have to examine this program closely because of the, the minimal reimbursement we get from the state. It does help greatly that Narragansett and North Kingstown contribute to this program. It's based strictly on the usage by residents. Depending on what that percentage is for each town, that's what their contribution would be, minus the, any grant funds or other types of funding that we would get. Excuse me.
I think that the other thing that's important, and we've talked about this in the past, is that there still needs to be some strong effort made with the state to deal with the maximum that they're paying. Right now, as on 14-3, we talk about what the maximum value is. They're paying us $41.48, while our cost is roughly right around $100 a day. So, it's a loss leader, and what it's going to do is that if this program can't continue to be successful, then what's gonna happen is we're gonna have people that are going to be in the community, that families are not going to have the respite care available. We're sheltering about $60,000 in cost to be able to provide for this program. Overall, as far as unduplicated participants, we're probably dealing with about 60 to 65 individuals that take use of the service. We like to look at it at 60 or 65 families that are making use of the service, because it's not so much what the individual is obtaining from the service, but rather what the family is obtaining in terms of an ability to be able to manage their, their needs. But with the lack of funding coming at the state level, it's making it more and more difficult for us to be able to continue the program without, on an annual basis, increasing property tax supports for it. We think that we're up to about 15 people on average coming through the center at this point. Our optimal number would be 18, but at the same time, if we get up to 18, we're probably gonna have to increase labor, because we've cut back on some of the labor at this point. So, there's a, a balance. It would be great if we could just keep a consistent 16. We'll probably get that during the summer months, but where we see the drop-off is in the December, January, February, the colder months seem to be a case where I think there's more illnesses, there's less desire for, for that population to get out. So, we, we'll probably, even if we can get up to the 16, we'll probably average over the year period in the 14 to 15 range, which is how we've fashioned this budget. So, we can live with the budget the way it is, but it's still gonna be our cost at around 60. The biggest concern that we have from a funding perspective is the continued share and relationship with the Town of Narragansett and the Town of North Kingstown, because we're using the four, four-year use, just as we do with the, the nutrition program, but what we're seeing is declining share requirements for the other two communities. So, we're seeing more of a burden that would be on the South Kingstown dollar itself. That could change, because all you really need is two or three participants from a community that are in there for three days or four days a week, and it will change the share ratios, but at this point, we're seeing a greater in South Kingstown use of that, that facility. Are you done coughing?
The Senior Center Program, again, it's kind of the focal point for the Senior Services Department. We offer all kinds of programming, services under the Senior Center roof, the nutrition program, obviously. With our budget, we do split out 70/30, the operational costs for the Senior Center versus the nutrition program, something just as a point of information, so you can see how the expenditures flow within those two categories. In terms of the Town of Narragansett's involvement with our program, again, this is another contribution where there's a cost share, and we base it on the, the active number of members within the program, and you'll see that. We have about 1,700, 1,800 South Kingstown residents and about 900 Narragansett residents. Cost per participant is about $92 per participant, and the cost shares are broken out here. For South Kingstown, it's about 165.5, and for Narragansett, it would be $84,926. Now, we do not ask the Town of Narragansett for full cost share of the Senior Center Program, but we do ask for about 54% for 16, 17. That's what we're seeking, $46,000 to cover some of the operational costs of the Senior Center.
They do operate their own Senior Center, and so there's a shared participation that they would have, and we felt that it would be appropriate not to go on that proportionate basis. So, we've, we've increased the, the amount, a couple of thousand dollars a year. We also look at it, I think this year, they're down about $7,000 in the Adult Day Services Program, so we're able to pick up a couple of thousand dollars there. What we don't wanna do is alienate the community, because they're providing good resource for us in terms of cost offset, and I don't think it's really fair to ask them for a dollar-for-dollar comparison, when it is our facility, and they're still running their own facility. As far as the, the budget's concerned, we've talked about the expenditures, I'd like to just take a look at page 14, 14, and that's the revenue statement, which I think is also important, because this provides greater clarification as to where the money's coming from for these programs. So, you can see the transportation program, we're, we're putting about $67,000 into that program. There's a little bit of grant money that comes in, so it's $71,000. The cost of a new van, what was the last one that was about, I think it was $120,000. That'll last us 10 to 12 years. We're looking probably past 2022 for the next target, but what we should be probably looking at is trying to set aside some reserve fund dollars as we get into the next couple of years, to be able to be ready for that next van replacement. So, it's- So it's, it's much more than $67,000. We're probably talking closer, you know, closer to about an $80,000 commitment on, on that transportation element. Nutrition, we've talked about the numbers again. This doesn't include the $35,000 that we get in, in the meals from, from the federal program, but here we're contributing about $82,000. The $60,000, as I mentioned, with Adult Day, and you can see there's a drop-off with Narragansett and North Kingstown this year based on the four-year share, share costs. And of course, the Senior Center itself, we're looking at the $204,000. Overall, municipal South Kingstown cost will be a $414,700 contribution, up $12,650 or about 3.1% from what the current year is. We spent a lot of time on this budget seeing what adjustments could be made. We felt that this was the only fair budget that we could come up with and still be able to provide the services that we think are necessary for those programs. Terry, anything else on it?
I think you've covered it.
Karen, what words of wisdom do you have for the council?
Well, you'll be sorry. No, I'd just like to thank the Town Council for your continued support over the years and appreciate all, you know, stopping by for our different events and we have St. Patrick's Day coming up soon. So we're having a bagpipe and little Irish step dances, so it's always a festive time. All invited to join us and especially thank you to the Town Manager for our continued support with the Senior Center. Thank you.
If I could say, I was so happy I could be there for your New Year's Eve celebration. The Senior Center has the ball drop at noon time, which was awesome. So it was a great event and I, you guys really just do a great, great job. New Year's Eve celebration, that might be my, my yearly favorite though. The noon time ball drop is just great.
I just wanted to know, is the building utilized at, at night at all in the evening hours?
No, it is not. It's mainly during the day for senior-specific activities.
So there's never like, nobody ever rents it out or uses it for an event? And also what Steve was saying earlier about bringing people in sometimes just to get some services and then they find out what, what else is available there. My grandmother's in her 90s and isn't somebody that would go to a Senior Center and sit there, but she has gone in and utilized several services that she didn't even know were available to her. So I definitely agree with that and can echo that sentiment that until you walk through those doors, you've no idea how much the Senior Center can offer our residents. It's incredible what you guys do over there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. I think the baby boomers are finally figuring it out. They were afraid of the Senior Center concept, but as they're coming in for their Medicare help and their prescription drug coverage each year, they're saying, "Well, maybe we can come here." So the word is definitely on the street and with 15 years in the new center and we just continue to grow and, and grow.
I also want to thank you, Karen, for the job that you do. I think I've been around since the inception or priotude of the Senior Center. I know I was on the Development Committee in Reasing Funds, but what I saw conceptually when it was done is a place that people not only go to get advice, but they go to gain friendships and they go to gain more knowledge and it's a meeting place that gives them a so much sustainability. It just, it's a place where people really enjoy to go and your staff is incredible with the people. You should be very proud of yourself and, and Terry and the people who make that facility possible. It truthfully is a wonderful place and I thank you for inviting us to the events. Can't always go to all of them because of work schedules, but I have enjoyed so many events and Steve's such a great cook.
He's getting better over the years.
But I just had one really simple question. What is going on with the lower building now?
Oh, well, we just received a community block grant, so we'll be renovating that building. We'll be getting new windows because we still have the barn windows up from when it was the farm.[892.23][892.23](laugh) And so we're getting new windows, new ceiling, new doors and hopefully we'll be doing some other renovation, if we get donations.
I remember lunches down there.
Oh, yes.
Lunches down there.
So do I.[908.43][908.43](laugh)
Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that building has a food pantry in it as well as has all of the different activities, any of the overflow stuff, the knitting area, all of those things. This'll give us the ability, this was something we had in the capital budget that we won't have to fund now that we've got that contract in place. In fact, it was awarded, council awarded that, I think, a month, a month ago. So that work should be done within the next three to four months.
We'll have more programming space, so that'll be great and it'll look more like, you know, the inside of the, the new building so we can get more people to utilize that building too. But as Steve said, the food pantry, that's been a valuable resource for all age groups. The first and third Thursday of the month, they're open through South County Community Action and so a lot of people utilize that service.
If there's no more questions on that, we'll move to tab 15. Tab 15 is the Community Recreation Center Fund. Certainly the council recalls establishing this back in January as far as being the operations program that'll be associated with the, the facility which is yet to be constructed. Alberg, the contractor, is scheduled to get a construction trailer on-site this month. We're looking at a groundbreaking either the last week in March or the first week in April. We're anticipating that construction of the facility will take us through at least December 31st. I would be surprised if it, if we're not into mid-January or February before we've got completion. It depends on the weather as to how well or how quickly they can get foundation work and those types of things in place. Certainly we understand what the size of the project is. Once it's completed, we're looking at an anticipated budget to operate it for the six months at about $181,000. As I said in my budget message that we went over last night, we're expecting it to rise in the '17, '18 year for a full-year operation in the $450,000 range. One of the things we talked about last night too was the need to try to develop third-party revenues or sponsorship programs to try to pay down some of the cost of what that operation will be. We're also anticipating with the, with the facility opening that our summer programs will be moved specifically to that location, both for daytime, for the summer camps where we can centralize the location. We'll have the ball fields, we'll have the tennis courts, we'll have the, on rain days, we've got the gymnasium. We're also able to then be able to do new programming that we can't do right now in the use of the school buildings and we're hopeful that those programs will also be able to return some, some dollars to the facility over what their cost is to operate. This is a preliminary budget. Obviously, if we don't spend, if we don't open until March, we're going to spend less than that amount. If we open in January, it should be tight. By that time, once we're in operation, we'll have a better idea as to whether there's economies of scale that can be brought back on that initial target of the $450 that we're looking at. The positions that will be here, we had hired a recreation supervisor last December in the Recreation Department. That, four-tenths of that position will be moved in, into the, into this budget when, when the facility opens and there'll be two positions that would, would come in. Terry, you may want to talk about what you're, you're targeting for those positions.
The staff for that facility will consist of a director or manager of the Recreation Center, full-time, also a full-time building maintenance technician, and then there will be the athletic supervisor, which Steve just mentioned, will be funded at .4 of a full-time employee. The remainder of that position will be funded out of, out of the general fund because there's a number of different outdoor programming that, that he does as well.
A hundred percent of it's in the general fund right now.
We also anticipate part-time personnel for staffing the front desk area and then a part, part-time personnel for building maintenance in the evening. Essentially, that's what we're looking at. As we move forward, that staffing structure may change a bit if we find that we can shift other departmental staff over, but it remains to be seen. But at a minimum, we need to have a director and a portion of the athletic supervisor under that, under that budget as well as building maintenance. That's pretty, the pretty basic structure for staffing.
We're going to do some evaluations of what Bristol's up to and Portsmouth's up to, those facilities that are similar in nature in terms of the type of programming that they're operating, which ones are successful, which ones are not, as well as what the community needs are here. So I mean, I think a lot of it, until we get the facility in place, we're, we're really going to have to identify. We, we know the sport activities are going to occur after, you know, four o'clock in the afternoon, about a school-related. We know that there should be morning activities that will involve use of the walking trails, potentially the indoor tennis or pickleball, which is another activity that is being targeted for use in that facility, as well as dropping times that, that would be available. One of the concerns that we have is that if there's nighttime activities that go past a nine o'clock hour, then we've got to look at janitorial services that would be expanded and that means that we've got to have programs paying fee to be able to offset those types of costs. But it's going to be a learning exercise for the first 18 to 24 months in terms of how we can use the facility and what the potential cost will be for both the participants and for, for the community in general. We've also got to define how the school use is going to occur here. Obviously, right now, they do not pay if they have a basketball game at the high school itself. If those services are continued on that type of a shared service basis without fee, then we've got to look at, well, where are those costs coming from? Obviously, if the schools have to pay to use the facility, they're paying with tax dollars from one side to the other, so it doesn't make, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense. We're not going to take it out of one pocket and put it in another. But all of those relationships need to be put on paper and, and set in place before we get into the year. That's why, as I said last night, I want to see a, an effort made with the Friends of Recreation, with the Recreation Commission, with staff for us to be able to take a look at the different things that are going on in different communities, how it, what's its cost, how is it working and to see whether or not we can develop those types of revenue streams with the program. But this is what our target is at this point. Certainly, it's the first year, it's going to be 171,000 in tax dollars that are going to be necessary.
Steve or Terry, hours of operation, what are you proposing?
At the moment, we're proposing 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Again, that could shift. If the demand is there and we can stay open, open earlier or later and there's the, the revenue coming in from that, then it might be worth it, but.
I think one of the things too is, I mean, for the summer programming with the amount of children that we're handling, to be able to put them all at one site rather than at multiple sites may give us a greater value in terms of both the programs that we can offer for the kids as well as being able to reduce staffing requirements that has to be multiplied at, at several different sites. And plus, if we have a thunderstorm, we don't have to worry about where we're putting the kids. We've got a place to, to keep, keep everybody safe. And, you know, with these, these sport programs that, that are in operation at this point, we really have to make sure we have the proper security for them as well.
Do you anticipate having somebody at the front desk for the entire time that the rec center's open or just during certain hours?
We are looking at it similar to, to the way we run the guild, which is we have a person at the desk for the full operation, daily operation, simply because there's a security issue and a building maintenance person can't always be around, so we would, we would need somebody available.
Are you proposing six or seven days or?
We, we will propose seven days during the non-summer season. We will, we actually, part of the guild budget showed a, a decrease in the front desk operation at the guild because we are looking to probably close on Sundays and possibly Saturdays at the guild once the rec center opens.
Depending on the programs that we have to offer at, at the guild that wouldn't be replicated at the other site. So it's, it's again, one of those things, I think we're going to have to see what people want and what are the programs that we're going to offer and what the appropriate location is going to be for them.
And I had another question. Do you plan to, well, you've mentioned that you plan to expand some of the programs that you can offer because you'll have the space to. Do we see any staffing and salary incre, or staffing increases because of that? Will you have to hire more people or are you going to work with the current staff that you have to expand those programs?
We've, we've already established a staff. We, we began that last year with, with adding that one rec supervisor. The beauty of independent contractors also is that, you know, we'll bring them in and run programs and, and not have it cost us anything. So the combination of that, we, we wouldn't require additional staffing.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions on that program? If not, Terry, you're set for the night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unless you've got some, you want to present Johns, it's okay.
I might have another cough attack.
Okay, if we could, as, let's see, I think we're going to... We're going to go to tab number eight and we're going to do the general fund component first of public services, which is the Public Services Department, tree management, street lighting, and then we'll go into streets and, and highway, then we'll go on to the three enterprise funds. John, you want to give us an abbreviated looksee at the public services?
So engineering is, is one of the divisions we have and it's essentially the technical arm of the town for our capital projects, both for transportation and other infrastructure. Again, we've got about 150 miles of municipal roads, about 20 bridges and culverts, and we've got five urban dams and one gravity masonry dam, which is the Main Street Dam. So all those, all that infrastructure, the Engineering Division is responsible for capital projects for improvements. In addition, we also assist the water and wastewater divisions with their capital projects and reach out to other town departments to assist them. I know we've been working with Terry and her department with the new Recreation Center. So, and the Police Department, we're working on one of their parking lots right now with them. So that's essentially what the engineering does at this point.
Why don't we bring Josh Rosen up so that at least he meets the council as well?
Josh Rosen's our town engineer, which everybody may have met already. The Engineering Division, we also oversee and work with the Tree Warden, Bill Wallace, both for routine tree work and then emergency tree work. In addition, we oversee the, the street lights in town and some of the, the, we have the ornamental lights on Main Street. We've got the parking lot lights at Peastale Parking Lot and, and that type of thing. Just if you want to go quickly into priorities we have for next year or the existing year, we've actually already done, as the council may know, the overlay for Sawgetucket Road, White Horn, Spring Hill and Stonehedge. That work has already been completed. I can give you a quick update on the, the solar votaic projects. The preliminary application's already been made to National Grid and we're finalizing the detailed application, which should hopefully be submitted this week. And then grid will take up to 120 days to determine what, if any, improvements need to be made to their distribution system. And again, the electrical system is actually, it's made to push electricity out, not take it back. So that's what the interconnection study is all about. And then once that study is done, at that point, we can finalize our contract with Cursage because there may be a big number or a small number for what the inter- Cursage because there may be a big number or a small number for what the interconnection cost is going to be. So, I'd like to say we'll probably, you'll probably start to see some construction, I'm going to say, later this summer. Hopefully, by then, we'll be up and going with the contractor getting on site, starting to install, you know, the photoelectric system. One thing that's happened subsequent to that award by the council, Congress passed an extension for the energy credits for the developers. So, we had that December thirty-first hard deadline. We had to complete the project by, that's actually been extended, I believe, five years. So, that gives us a little bit of breathing room, but the Cursage is still plowing ahead as quickly as they can to try to get that project up and running, so.
One more step the council will be involved in is that there's going to be a need for a zoning amendment to allow for the siting of this type of a facility on a government institutional parcel. We're being careful on how that's drafted. There's also been, there's also been interest in private fields that we've got to look at the zoning on that as well as to how that would fit within agricultural zones itself. But as far as for the public zone, for both GI property owned by the town and GI owned by the university, we need to get a zoning amendment in place to be able to move that one step further. So, you've got two contracts that are going now, one with, that we need to get with Cursage, the second one that you awarded the preliminary on the other night, as far as the secondary energy, excess energy sales. So, that project's going to take us probably a good portion of the next eight or nine months before it really comes online at the very earliest.
The next project's the East Mattoonik Water Main. That project's been awarded, and actually, we have a pre-construction meeting towards the end of the month. So, we're hoping that construction will start, what, twenty-second? I think they're shooting for twenty-second of March. And then, we'll wrap that up, you know, before the snow flies, so that, which will give us an ability to service both sides of the water system because, again, if the council remembers, we only have that one water main that runs along the Barrier Beach that was compromised by Hurricane Sandy. Mattoonik Beach Road Protection Project, as the council's aware, HKNS unfortunately went bankrupt. So, that's in receivership proceedings now, and we're hoping the receiver's trying to work with RIDOT to get that project reassigned. The bonding company, obviously, is a little anxious about that because they have some significant liability. So, hopefully, we're going to be able to get that project reassigned to one of the other bidders at the time, but we certainly won't be looking at a construction start until August at the earliest. Josh was instrumental in getting, we had a good third-party contract for catch basin cleaning this past year, and we, I think we got upwards of five hundred catch basins, about one-fifth of the catch basin infrastructure clean, which really went well. So, we'll continue that in the future.
And we've also loaned Josh out to Terry, and he'll be co-managing with her the construction for the rec center. So, we've got the in-house engineering there as well. So, again, I just want to point out the amount of shared services that we're doing with each of the different departments, which is important for us.
So, do we have the equipment or the ability or did we?
We had a vac truck at one time, and it's, we used to call it the mothership. It was huge. It was very expensive, a lot of moving parts. And we evaluated the cost of replacing that piece of equipment, which was, I think was, at this point, probably well over three hundred thousand dollars. So, for us, it was, made more economic sense to contract that out. Tree warden, again, we work with Bill Wallace. Bill reviews any tree applications we have. He works with our highway division when we do trimming internally. And also, Bill does the emergency removals, anything that's an imminent public safety issue, Bill does that as part of his duties.
Please make an explanation as to how we deal with that so that everybody's aware.
So, what we do is, like, after a storm, if we have a hangar, Bill's got to go out and take care of that hangar for us, something that's beyond our capabilities in the highway division. But at the same time, we also maintain a tree log, if you will, of trees that need to be removed, but they're not an imminent threat. Those trees, we have time that we can go out and we secure bids for those. So, again, Bill does the public safety element where it's an imminent threat, but trees that have been identified as needing to be removed, we do that through a competitive bidding process.
Those the ones you tie the caution ribbon around?
That's the ones we tie. And actually, I'll back up a little bit. The first thing we do is go to National Grid because if that tree is a threat to the utilities, Grid has been very good about removing those trees for no cost. Typically, they take them down below their wires, which is a lion's share of the cost. And they've literally saved us thousands upon thousands of dollars over the years. That's the first thing we do is go to Grid, and they've been very good to work with. I'm not going to go through the specific performance measures. I think they're self-explanatory unless the council has questions. Again, goals and objectives for the upcoming year is, again, to finish the East Mattoonik Water Main by December and get hopefully started with the Mattoonik Beach Road Protection Project. And again, the solar projects are at least, I don't know if they're going to be completely done, but they probably be close to being done by the end of this calendar year. Moonstone Beach Road is scheduled for reconstruction overlay, and this road is probably now the worst road we have in town. Unfortunately, there's only two uses on it, which is the Baptist Church and Coppershaw's Farm, but that's not to say people don't use it to get back and forth to Route One, but that's...
Dale's giving you a dirty look.
Who's giving me a dirty look, oh, Dale? Go through Perryville, Gold Post Road. So, that road's scheduled to be done this year, as will Mattoonik Beach Road. And Cherry Lane and Charles Lane next to Belmont is in need of overlay. We'll probably cold plane those and then overlay them. The council should see some tree ordinance amendments sometime in the upcoming months that we've been working on with the planning department and the Conservation Commission. And again, we're still evaluating the feasibility of municipal ownership of streetlights and LED technology.
On that, John, it says on the previous page, work with Town of Narragansett to develop a regional RFP?
Yeah, well, Narragansett, they've let an RFP, and I believe the RFP was for consultants to do a more detailed inventory of the National Grid, although I think the inventory we have is pretty decent. It may be off here or there, but not a lot. Because what we did was, a number of years ago, we worked with the police department. We had them evaluate every single street light in town, and what we did was we downsized a lot of the lights in wattage. So, we went, I think, down as low as seventy-five watts, which, on the flip side, kind of hurt us because that increased our capital cost to buy the streetlights from Grid because now we've got relatively new, they didn't replace the fixture, but they replaced the lamps. So, we kind of, even though we were trying to do diligence to reduce power costs, it kind of shot us in the foot if we have to buy the equipment, so.
The projected cost on the lights is somewhere in the area of seventy to seventy-two thousand dollars is what we expected it would come in at. But the point is that you have to do several other things. You've got to do the maintenance on it, and you've got to have the complaint reporting system so that you can document when the light goes out, when you get the complaint, and then what the time period is before it's repaired. And then, you have to also do the evaluations as to what modifications you want to make to your farm, whether or not you're going to go LEDs, and if you're going to go LEDs, are you going to go with the cellular components to it that allow you to turn the lights on or reduce intensities based on the time of night, those types of things. So, there's a lot more to it than just simply buying the lights and then doing the maintenance on it. Do we think there's a savings as far as the maintenance would be concerned? I think the answer is yes. I think the buyback would be several years for the acquisition of the lights, but if you're buying a light system that's going to need to be totally replaced with an LED system rather than just a bulb replacement on the existing fixture, it can get very pricey. So, one of the things that I mentioned last night is that we want to take a look at, a couple of towns have gone forward, and we want to see what their, what opportunities they see with it. We did look at, as a regional RFP, and that was with North Kingston, Narragansett, South Kingston, and Middletown, and we weren't satisfied with the prices that came in. They looked higher than what they needed to be. There was only two proposals that came in that we've decided that we'll break it back out into the individual communities and see what we can do with it.
The other thing that we're still waiting on is National Grid has yet to roll out a tariff for LED. So, I, my opinion is, I think we're premature on going, if we were to go in a third-party direction, until we get the LED tariff prices from National Grid and the PUC.
John, you mentioned you, the town coordinates the repair of the ornamental lighting on Bean Street. Do you just mean the ornamental light posts or do you mean the lights that are in the trees?
No, the light posts, the light, yep.
Okay, not the ones that are decorative ones, okay.
All right, as far as the budgets, the budgets, there's three different budgets that are shown here. The first is the engineering division itself, which is looking at a reduction of about twenty thousand dollars. A lot of that is because we had costs going out for, I believe, for severance dollars in the current year, as well as a reduction in the cost of full-time salaries because of personnel changes that did occur. We're also seeing some reductions in terms of the cost on the benefits, particularly the health care. So, there's no questions on that. Tree management, there's not really a lot of change that's there. This is a budget, you could spend any amount of money that you want. If you wanted to put new trees in place within the rights of way, certainly, we could increase the value of the professional services or the agricultural material. This is a basic program. What we're doing here is paying for the tree warden's salary, and we're providing the necessary ABRA services to be able to deal with the takedowns that go out to bid or the emergency work that's done, and very little in terms of new tree or tree replacement for trees that are taken down. The street lighting budget, we're showing at one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. Our spending pattern this year is looking as if that may be a low number by the time we're done, but we'll budget at the one ninety-three number. If necessary, we'll have to take funds out of the public services program itself or streets and highway to offset any overexpenditures in the street lighting. So, in total, we've got a program for the public services programming at six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. If there's no questions as far as engineering is concerned, we can move into the highway division. And with that, Paul, you want to come up? Bring our highway superintendent in. And John, why don't you just do a quick walkthrough as far as that department's concerned?
Everybody does know that Paul Frainy, the highway superintendent?
This is the man making the decisions on when the snow gets removed. He's corresponding with the school department at three-thirty in the morning and giving him, them, an update as to what he sees for the buses when they begin to roll. What time do they roll, Paul? Six-thirty? So, this, there's a lot of coordination. I want to make sure it's known that there's, between the police department and the public works department, there's a good deal of coordination with the superintendent's office as to whether they, A, want to delay schools, B, want to close schools, or whatever they want to do on a given day. So, that's important because I think you'll get questions next week on how the town operates with the school department coordination.
So, again, what Paul's division's responsible for is routine maintenance of that infrastructure, not the capital. So, that means, again, you know, snow plowing, ice removal, sweeping, because then, once the winter's over, we've got to sweep it all up, and that material then has to be transported to central landfill, let's go to a line facility. You know, roadside mowing. We do grade a limited number of private roads, so-called by tradition. Unfortunately, we can't give, you know, walk away from that, but we're in no obligation to increase it. So, we do do seasonal grading, which takes us a couple of months in the spring each year. Paul's division, they also maintain all the dams, the earthen dams in town. We have to mow those regularly, as do, we have to mow both Rose Hill and the West Kingston landfills. Hopefully, that component will go away because, as a requirement of the solar, the developer's going to be responsible for cap maintenance within the fence line, so, and that's not an easy project due to the side slopes. It takes us a couple of weeks, so that'll hopefully free us up with a little bit of time there. Paul's division also helps out with any site work and excavation. Again, we're talking, working with the police department to make some improvements to their parking lots. We'll do that. Rather than them farming it out, they'll have to have somebody come in to pave it, but we'll do all the site work for them at a significant savings to the town. Paul's working right now with the water division, making some improvements down at Mortucket Tank, which we'll talk about a little later. So, and we do, you know, spot repairs. If we have drainage complaints where we have infrastructure in the close proximity of the complaint, Paul's staff will go out and make improvements, put in a catch basin or swales, whatever, try to mitigate that. So, again, a lot of routine work, but we do also, again, help out with construction wherever we can with other departments. Priorities, I mean, I just kind of summarized what we talked about. And again, I think the performance measures is pretty self-explanatory. And goals, the goals and objectives are similar to what we do in the current year.
Budget-wise, we're looking at a two-point-three-two-nine million dollar budget, which is about the same budget that we had for the current year. A couple of the items that are changing that you see here is that there's a sizable reduction of almost forty-five thousand dollars in medical retirees. Two individuals reached the age of sixty-five, were no longer responsible for that health care for those individuals, so we're dropping from the hundred and three down to the sixty-three. See, with the professional services, we're still maintaining professional services. That account really is soup to nuts. It's everything from the stone seal program, as well as some of the rubberized stone seal, right-away improvements, putting the gravel down on the private roads that we're, have to deal with. That's also where the sweeping contract is budgeted for. Refuge collection at all of the different municipal buildings goes through this account. We've also got drug testing and physical testing that's necessary to be able to maintain CDLs and all of the testing that's necessary for stormwater management and catch basin cleaning. So, that's what makes up that three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand dollar budget. Chemicals and gases, those are the amounts that you see for the salts and other chemicals that are necessary for the maintenance of the roads. We are seeing a couple of reductions in terms of fuel is one of the, one of the accounts that we would point out, and that's just based on the cost of fuel being down considerably. Hopefully, it'll stay at that level. So, we've tried to take the economy of scales on that. We haven't really pushed the professional services. You could spend any amount you want in that account as well. We could do more stone sealing. We could do transfer out at the end of the year money to do for overlays if necessary. But overall, this is the, you know, the budget for maintaining highways and sand salt and plowing requirements. Of course, it's augmented by the capital improvement program with the equipment purchases that we have on a yearly basis. I think this year, there's about two-hundred thousand dollars' worth of equipment that will be acquired as a part of the capital pay-as-you-go portion of the budget.
Steve, when we see a savings in a warmer winter, when we don't have as much snow removal, where does that money go?
At the end of the year, we'll take a look at what monies are left in the streets and highway account, and then we'll usually recommend to the council transferring some of those, that surplus into the capital construction fund for road improvements. Then, we can use that money to be able to do more of the paving overlay programs or road reconstruction. I mean, obviously, we're... I mean, obviously, we're never going to be ahead when it comes to maintenance of the 150 miles that we have, but if we have excess dollars that are available because we didn't use them for snow purposes, then we can push those dollars there. If we were having a bad year with other accounts that were overextended, we may just not send money into the capital program for a year, just to be able to increase fund balance for the general fund. But Trish will look at all of the different accounts, probably in the month of May, and make the recommendations for the first meeting in June as far as budget transfers that are out. This year's looking very good in a lot of areas. We've also got, our property tax collections are coming in substantially better than what we were budgeted for, so from a surplus position, I think we will have some flexibility that the council can exercise.
Great.
Any other questions on streets? Paul, as usual, did an excellent job.
Paul, I just want to say, I bet you all the children in our community are very happy when you call the Police Department and coordinate the no-school deals.
They don't know where you live.
Thank you.
The next tab that we'll go to is 17, and 17 is our Water Enterprise Fund. Louis, you want to stay there, or you want to come up?
Comfortable, right here, Steve.
I think we're comfortable keeping you there.
So the Water Fund is comprised of two water systems. One is the Middle Bridge System, which essentially runs from Middle Bridge Bridge along Middle Bridge Road up to Radial Drive and the little dead-end streets. And we've got about 250 or so customers there. And then the South Shore System, which is from Charleston Town Line to Snug Harbor, South Route 1, with the exception of Perryville. So, you know, both of those water systems are operating well. The only exception is, obviously, the council's aware, we're in the process of that disinfection system, which we're hoping, at this point, will have start-up on this coming Monday. So hopefully, that will take care of the total coliform hits, which we've been having, which, again, our consulting engineer was today, and everybody's still scratching their head as to why we get those, because the system went online back in the '70s, and we didn't have that problem up until the last few years. Even when we transitioned from United, from our wells to United Water back in 2000, and we had different sources of supply, we still didn't have that problem, so.
John, can you explain the difference between coliform?
Yeah, so it's, we, all water systems are required to test for bacteriological contaminants. Each month, we test, we do two rounds of sampling a month. So what we, what's done is, the sample is tested initially, and actually, Department of Health does ours, for total coliform. And if it comes back positive for total, and what total coliform is, it's an indicator that there may be other, more harmful coliforms present. So they take that same sample, and they re-sample it for fecal. And in each of these events that we've had a positive total coliform hit, the fecals have all been negative, and fecal's obviously the bad one. But that being said, we purchase our water from United and have done so since 2000, and the water comes in from East Mattoonik, and then again, goes all the way over to Green Hill. And by the time the water gets to Green Hill, what little chlorine residual is left is either insignificant or not effective. So that's the purpose why we're installing this disinfection system, so we can have higher chlorine levels to get, even if it's total coliform, we get a proper kill over there. So that system, again, should be up and running, hopefully, within the next week or so, and that, you know, we're hoping will once and for all alleviate that problem. So again, we still keep our wells maintained and on Department of Health's role at Factory Pond, but that well field, we don't use, and we won't be able to use until such time that we're able to build a water filtration plant, which is not an inexpensive endeavor. You know, nowadays, we're probably looking somewhere between four and five million, so, you know, we'll keep reserving funding, and hopefully, at some point, we may be able to reactivate that well field if we build a water treatment facility.
Understand that we can't mix the two waters because they've got different compositions. So if we were going to go back to using Factory Pond, it would have to be a shut-off, and all of our system for South Shore would have to be supplied from Factory Pond again. You know, we initially, we're hopeful that we would be able to mix the two, but based on what the loading is that's done with United Water versus ours, the mix wouldn't be proper. So it's got to be 100% or nothing.
When we say Factory Pond, it's actually not a surface water supply, it's actually groundwater wells in close proximity to Factory Pond.
Would there be significant savings on an annual basis if we were able to get Factory Pond back working?
Well, I think the capital cost and the operating cost for the water filtration plant, it would be significant. On the flip side, United Water keeps, you know, their rate increases haven't been small. In fact, I spoke to the new General Manager, and at some point, they're going to be replacing the Sherman Tank at the intersection of Allen Ave and South Road, and they'll likely be looking for a similar rate increase that they got the last time when they did the Proud Tank. It's going to be a similar elevated tank, replacing that standpipe. So I don't, I don't think the days of not seeing significant increases from United Water's going to go away. So, I mean, it's, at one point, you know, you've got the cost to run a new, build a new facility, and then you've got United Water, their, you know, their rates are going to be increasing, so.
Right now, we're spending about $210,000 at most a year as far as purchased water is concerned. If we were going to be operating a treatment facility, not just the capital cost, but the operational cost for that would far outnumber on an annual basis that $200,000. But as John says, if we see a doubling or tripling of those costs as we go forward, there could be justification for us to look at that type of facility. But with the size of the water system, the type of expenditure that would be necessary of a capital nature would make the pricing on the, on annual use outrageously expensive. And again, remember that a great deal of that system, 60% of the water probably sells in the first three months of the summer. That's why particularly, we have the trouble with the coliform counts in January, February, because that water is sitting in the water tank. We could drain that tank, but if we do, then we jeopardize fire protection in terms of the volume that's available if we were to need it. So you're balancing, it's a balancing act to deal with.
So again, for, you know, current year priorities, it's finishing the disinfection system. Lucian's going to be working with the Engineering Division on the East Mattoonik Water Main Loop. We did finish our first year water, quarterly water billing, which went extremely well, which we were very happy with. We still read meters on a monthly basis, even though we bill quarterly, and the reason why is, our meters have the technology that, the day we read them, it looks at the prior days of reading, if there's consumption every hour, it sends up a leak alert, because most people aren't consuming water every hour. So we send leak alert letters to customers, and we find the majority of those, the people are very happy that they were using water that they weren't, whether it be a leaking toilet or something like that, they weren't aware of it. So the technology's there, so we keep doing that on a monthly basis as a courtesy to the customers, if we can find leaks. And again, the, you know, the ongoing, leak detection is an ongoing program that will continue now for, probably forever.
John, are all our meters are wireless now?
Yes.
Except for the ones in Middle Bridge, is it?
No, Middle Bridge is wireless as well.
Okay, so everything's wireless now?
Everything's radio read.
Oh, okay.
The other thing that's important with the water system is that in 2014, we put the new, we had a rate study that was completed, and we put together a rate structure to meet the new state requirements as far as the quarterly billing. And what, that's known as a, an inclining block system, and what that means is that you get the first 1,250 cubic feet within your base charge. The base charge is $48 a quarter, and you get anything, if you use more than the 1,250 cubic feet, then you pay an excess charge. If it exceeds, I think, what the, what's the excess?
Yeah, it's the next, the first step is from 1,251 to 2,500 cubic feet, that's a $3.25 per 100 cubic feet, and then over 2,500 cubic feet, it's $3,075 per 100 cubic feet.
See, the key that was here was during the summer months, somebody would live on the South Shore System for a three-month period, and they could use excessive amounts of water, but they would be under the 10,000 cubic feet that was available to them for the yearly charge. Now, if they're using more than the 1,250 in that quarter, they're going to pay excess. This is a way of being able to reduce consumption requirements, so that people become much more conscious of the water. I think of all of the utilities in Washington County, the one that's probably the most stretched at this point is water. The amount of water that's going to be available for extraction in excess of what currently is pulled out by the farm, farming, or by the public sector, or by the people that are on private wells, is already having impacts on stream level requirements. And what we're anticipating is that there will be new state regulations that are going to set resource allocation levels that could, in fact, pass, be passed, that we're going to need to be able to create more conservation efforts than we're currently creating.
So as far as performance measures, I mean, you know, our projections for consumption are, a lot of it's based on climate. If we have a wet summer, you know, the consumption's down, probably more so, actually, than if we have a dry summer, we have the water restrictions. So again, it's, the projections for, you know, purchased water, and then the, you know, correlating amount of sales is more dependent climate-wise. As far as accounts go, I mean, Middle Bridge, there's not a whole lot of growth, they're pre-stable. South Shore, other than the recent East Mattoonik farms, we haven't seen a lot of growth down there. A lot of the land is encumbered with development, right? So we just, over the years, don't see a lot of accounts increasing. The manager just talked about the user fees, and there's the associated revenues with those fees. And again, as far as goals and objectives for the current year would be, again, to finish the East Mattoonik interconnect, still stay vigilant with the unaccounted-for water, make sure that we're getting the proper disinfection levels in the Westerly side of the distribution system, and continue compliance with the Cross Connection Control Plan, which is essentially a backflow prevention plan for our commercial users. They're required to have a testable backflow device and provide us documentation that's been tested and operable each year.
I think that's about it on the, on the water. Any questions on the water budget? Again, as I mentioned to you last night, there's excess revenue that'll come in this year. We're hopeful that the rate will not change for a five-year period, so we may see that we'll be under revenue, instead of revenue neutral by the fourth year. The next fund that we'll deal with is on Tab 18, which is the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. Want to ask Kathy to come up? I think you all know Kathy Perez, who's a wastewater superintendent.
The brewmaster. The brewmaster.
She makes beer, too, on the weekends, but we're a little bit concerned.
So again, the wastewater department is a, is a regional program with the university in that town of Narragansett. We get the university's flows from the Kingston campus, and then the Narragansett flows essentially north of the Narragansett Town Beach. The part of Narragansett that's sewn south of Narragansett Town Beach goes to their Scarborough Treatment Facility. So with the wastewater department, the cost for, whether it's capital improvements or operating improvements, is a portion based upon where the flow's coming from. So if it's, if it's any expense associated with the treatment plant, it's split between the town of Narragansett, South Kingston, and URI, based upon their flow contribution. If it's any expense associated with the South Kingston Collection System, it's a, it's a split between the university and Narragansett, depending upon where it is. So Silver Lake Pump Station, for example, that's the last pumping facility that sends the wastewater over to the treatment plant. That's a portion based upon URI's contribution to the collection system versus ours. And again, for a Kingston pump station, because URI's got, for example, 90% of the flow that goes through that facility, they pay 90% of the cost. And then we've got another, I believe, we have 13 pump stations total. So two of those stations, Kingston and Silver Lake, are regional. The rest of those, 11 of them, are just for our own customers, so we pay those total expenses. So again, priorities for the current year is to make sure we get the removals in the treatment process to, in accordance with our RIPD's permit. And again, our RIPD's permit is, it's an acronym for Renilem Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. These are the pollutants that we're allowed to discharge, and I don't know if that's the right terminology, but we're allowed, what's, for example, 30-30, 30BOD, biological oxygen demand, and 30 suspended solids. So, and, and we also have a permit limit for chlorine, how much chlorine residual we can, we can discharge. And our outfall is actually off of Tucker's Dock, for everybody who's familiar, Down By the Seawall. The only thing I'll caution the council on, we just received notice, the RIPD's permit's a five-year permit. We just received notice that we're up for renewal again. And the last two permits that we received five years ago and 10 years before that, Riedem put requirements on it 10 years ago, it was for chlorine removal, we had to put a chlorine removal system in, and the last permit removal, the last permit update requires to put a continuous chlorine analyzer in. So we don't know yet if there's going to be any financial implications associated with the new permit when it's, when it's issued, but we won't know until we get that from them.
And we can be assured that, as we've talked about before, based on the fact that this system was first installed, 1975, 1976 was the first year of operation, there's a great deal of capital requirements that are going to be necessary in the rebuilding of all of the major components, whether it's the pumps themselves at the pump stations, the generators, or all of the different equipment that's at the, at the wastewater treatment facility. And you've seen in the capital budget, I think this year, we're talking about almost $400,000, next year, almost $500,000, that would be necessary for various components. Obviously, they're not all South Kingston's cost, based on the cost share, but there's going to be some major costs going forward that will eventually impact what user fee requirements are going to be in the system, based on some of the major costs that are going to come into, come into bear.
So Kathy's staff also goes through the collection system with a piece of equipment that we clean it every other year, so we're kind of on a continuous basis, and that helps us out on the claim side of things, that we sell them if ever have any claims. And I think other communities in the state have some significant claims for backups. We're fortunate that we don't do that, but we try to be proactive in cleaning the collection system. The treatment plant also is one of the few facilities in the state that takes septicage. So we do take septicage from South Kingston and Narragansett, and if we do have additional capacity, we will allow some from out of town as well. One of Kathy's staff members also oversees the town's onsite wastewater program. We've got about 6,300 properties in town that have onsite systems. All those systems have either been inspected and have passed, the property was required to hire a private licensed inspector to have the system inspected. So they've either passed their initial baseline inspection, or if they haven't had the system inspected, we've recorded notice of violation against the property, or if they have a cesspool or failed system, we've recorded NOV against the property. And we won't release any of those three NOVs until the NOV is satisfied, either, one, them having an inspection, or two, replacing the cesspool, or repairing the septic system. So that's gone, I think, relatively well. Most people have been very compliant, and we've replaced a number of cess, or they've replaced a number of cesspools in town already, so I think we're much farther ahead than most communities in that regard.
You're talking about the new, the state law that tells, says to people that they need to replace their cesspools?
That's at the time of sale. The original Cesspool Act was only for properties within, I can't remember, it was 200 feet of a water course, but I believe the new one is you can't sell your property without the system being replaced.
But we had put the requirements in years before that act came out to require the removal on the... removal on the those systems, or to have the owner given a certain period of time to be able to do it. The other thing too is we've worked with a lot of property owners that need to get bank financing for us to have to remove the NOV so that they can get the financing and then put the NOV back on, as long as we have a commitment from them as far as when they're going to be able to do the work. Because we understand that many people have bought property that have got cesspools, and now they've got to get rid of it. Some of those cesspools, to put in the new systems, if they're an advanced technology system, they could be $30,000. Even with a conventional system, and there's not many conventional systems for anything that's in the South Shore or anything, anything south of Route 1 would have to be an advanced tech system. So you're talking some major costs for people to be able to get rid of those systems, as much as it's an improvement, in some cases it's impossible for them to get the financing. We've also provided a system where people can get no-interest loans, is it? No interest?
It's like, yeah, it's very low, C-Slip Community Septic System.
I mean, how much money do we have outstanding now? Well over a million and a half dollars that have gone out through that bond money. So we've worked very hard to be able to get the cesspools out of the community and proper ISDS systems in place, but it's still a very big project.
So again, I don't want to, unless counsel has questions, I mean, specific performance measures, I think they're relatively self-explanatory. You know, we're still operating, and the plant is about in the mid-50s average daily flow. We are required through our RIPD's permit that if we exceed 80% of the capacity three consecutive months, then we have to initiate expansion of the facility. But as you can see, we've got quite a bit of leeway at this point. User fees, again, you know, based upon what we're projecting for flow and revenue, we don't anticipate an increase in the user fee in the current year.
Just stopping for a second with the user fees. The user fees, with water, we send out quarterly bills. With the wastewater, it's a single bill, two-pot, where somebody can pay the full bill on the first payment or have the second payment, being three months later. So there's two different methods that are used here. Understand that here, we would never want to go to a quarterly billing because we have to get the water readings from United Water. Because remember, we don't have the water system for the people that are on the sewer system. You're either on the sewer system or you're on our water system. So for us to be able to properly charge people that are residential users or commercials within the sewer district itself, we have to be able to get the volume uses from United Water. So at this point, we get those once a year, and it takes us a considerable amount of time to be able to convert those for billing purposes. Unlike with the water bills, we can do the water meter readings and be able to do the billings within 15 days. With the wastewater, it's a much different process, having to work with a private company.
We also use Kingston Water readings as well, because they're our customers. So the manager's correct, takes us 15 days to get the, from the day we read the water to the day we bill. Wastewater's a two-month process. And just for example, if United Water changes the meter, they change the account number, which I don't understand why they do that, but that's what they do. So it takes a lot of manual extraction to try to correlate which that account is. It's not automated like it is for the water. Again, that's because we're relying on the data that they and Kingston Water are providing us. Again, goals and objectives similar to what we're doing this year, other than we would hope to have an amendment to the council sometime in the upcoming year for the onsite wastewater ordinance. Right now, it's performance-based, based upon what the inspector comes up with, and you know, I've had some, I guess, concerns regard to, you know, what they say your next inspection should be. I mean, some people put down a year, and I'm like, you know, why is it a year if there's only a couple inches of sledge in the tanks? We'd like, and it's a very difficult thing to manage because we're always trying to chase back to somebody who hasn't had the inspection. What we're trying to look at doing is going to a more structured system, like every, now that we know what everybody has with a baseline inspection, try to get everybody in, let's say, a four-year pumping and inspection cycle, and at the same time, try to integrate that with a different software. There's other softwares that are available. Right now, we have an access database, which is very difficult to manipulate versus, you know, their canned software programs specifically for this. So those are the type of things that we're evaluating, and hopefully, we'll be back before you folks, asking consideration for an ordinance amendment sometime in the future.
I think we know, one of the things we want you to look at is the revenue stream, and that's on page 18-13. And you can see here what's coming out of the residential and commercial user base. About 1.6 million of the 3.8 million comes from South Kingston users. The beauty of having a regional system is that the shared use, we have got the university contributing about $711,000, and Narragansett over $1 million, because Narragansett right now has the most flows going into the facility. So they're paying a larger share, particularly on the regional components, which also means on the regional component, the capitals, they'll also be paying a larger share for the replacement of those equipments. As John mentioned, we've got, we're one of the few facilities that takes in septicage, and you can see that the septicage provides a good-sized revenue stream of about $304,000. That's not clear profit, because the cost to process the materials is probably in the area of $260,000. But it still is returning monies that will pay down what our overall costs would be for the operation. We're looking this year that we would need to take from retained earnings about $13,700. That means that we're in a deficit position, that we're looking to retained earnings to be able to provide for a balanced program for the year. We'll have to look at this as we go forward the next couple of years. As I say, some of it is directly related to the capital cost sharing, but it may be a case that we are going to have to do another review of our rates. Right now, I think our wastewater rates are the lowest in the state, by a large extent. So it's not, certainly, I don't want to raise the rates because we're the lowest rates in the state, but at the same point, we've got to make sure that we've got a proper revenue stream coming in for fair share funding on the program. Any of the assets that are in retained earnings are going to be used, or can be used for us to pay for our share of capital costs going forward. So it's a balancing act, again, that we would be able to use that, but when we look at the operations, the people that are using the system on a year-to-year basis should be paying what the true cost is for the operation of that system. If we can use some of the capital costs being paid for through retained earnings, certainly that protects everybody's investment. But right now, we're looking at just about $13,700. That's not much on a $3.8 million program, but when you look at the South Kingston component itself, it's probably closer to a program for around $2 million. Any questions on wastewater?
I'm always amazed how you folks can talk about this without actually saying the word. You say a lot of different words that mean the same thing.
It's a very necessary service. Our next necessary service is the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. Solid Waste Enterprise Fund has really taken on a couple of components, and it's become much more sophisticated as we go along. One is the local solid waste management component itself, in terms of us having an ordinance in place to be able to direct or hopefully manage the way people dispose of their trash and the recyclables. The Rose Hill Transfer Station, it doesn't seem possible that we opened that facility in December of 1983. So it's well over 30 years, of course, it's been replaced once after the second of two fires that we've had there. A major component, most of it is concrete in base. But at this point, the contract that we have with Link Environmental, many of the physical components of that facility are being replaced or expanded. Second Scale House is slated for installation, plus paving and concrete has been installed to be able to provide for better drop-off locations. We're also dealing with an attempt to provide for greater recycling opportunities within the community. Since the state went to the single-stream recycling, we've seen an increase. We're now being able to recycle in excess of 35% of the materials that come through. We're still licensing different vendors that pick up at the curb collection, and we're also having to monitor their recycling materials. The Solid Waste Enterprise Fund also deals with the closeout of the two landfills. When you look at the budget for the program, which is presented starting on 19.5, you can see that there's very little maintenance of the general equipment. A large component is the tipping fee. This is the cost that the vendor has to pay, and we reimburse for the tipping, any of the residential waste that comes through the transfer station. The administration, which is in at about $59,000, is for the personnel that we assign to it. As we've said before, we assign personnel, a portion of John's salary, a portion of secretarial work goes through this budget as well. So you've got an administrative cost. Then we get into the different things as far as the general waste management program. When you get down to the bottom, this is where we're spending the most amount of money, and that's as far as the super fund, where you can see that we've got the debt that has to be paid right now. You've got two bonds that were sold, one for Plains Road, one for Rose Hill. The debt service is about $178,000 a year that must be paid in tow of those bonds. Plus, we have closeout costs which are ongoing. There's consulting fees that are necessary to be able to continue to evaluate whether there's any off-site migration of pollutions, of pollutants that are there. Plus, once we bring in, the solar, solar will come through this program as well in terms of some of the revenue intakes. That should allow us to be able to offset debt costs as well as a lot of the operational costs that are associated with the super fund program itself. So this budget is evolving in terms of over the next year. Hopefully, there'll be additional revenues that'll come through that program, that either a portion or all of them will come through this enterprise fund. We may also look at it, we have to make decisions after we find out what the lease payment will be with the Chrysage, and what the value will be of the excess sales for South Kingston. Right now, there's a pending issue with, we're dealing with DEM. You may recall, when we closed out the landfills, 50% of the cost was paid for through DEM, and 50% through EPA. With us being required to pay direct costs or to reimburse the 50% that DEM had to pay, we're paying a portion of that, about 20%, over a 20-year period. So now, based on the consent decree that came through with that super fund, they may be entitled to a portion of the revenues that are generated from solar. So we've got a number of things over the next year that we can't define for you right now that will come into play within this program. But I think, however I look at it, I think we'll be in a better position next year than we are this year in terms of flow. There's no property taxes that go in here, the bag tag prices aren't changing, they'll stay at the, what is it, $1.80? A $1.80. And we'll continue to hopefully maintain the 35% recycling rate, which will then get us a $3 discount for each of the tons that go up to the facility that have to be used for the recycling purposes. So those are the highlights on the Solid Waste Enterprise Fund. John, is there anything I've missed?
The only thing that I wanted to add is it hasn't happened yet, it's not going to affect our budget next year, but Resource Recovery is going to be looking for an increase on the municipal tip, which has been $32 a ton for 20 years.
It goes back to when the Silvestri landfill was bought and became Resource Recovery, so it's well over 25 years. It stayed at $32. The initial proposal from Resource Recovery was they wanted to bring that up to 64. Right now, they've indicated that they may be able to get it down into the 40s. Interestingly enough, they're turning a profit this year, and the state's taking that profit and putting it into general revenues for the state budget, rather than holding the dollars to be able to offset what these costs will be. Those costs really shouldn't have a lot of impact on South Kingston and Narragansett users. Again, this is another regional facility, because at a $1.80, a bag tag, the number of bag tags that fit within a ton, we may be looking at a 10 or a 20 cent increase, maybe up to $2, but it shouldn't upset the manner in which we operate our facility at this point. It may impact home pickups, based on those vendors seeing an opportunity to recover additional costs. But until we see what the state's going to do, and that's not for the 16, 17 year, that's to start in, I think, 17, 18, what they're going to do, and whether, I think that in the long run, what will happen is that it will be a phased, a multi-year phase in, and we'll go from a 32 to a 36 to a 40, up to whatever an appropriate dollar amount is. I just don't think it was realistic to think that they could double the cost of one year, particularly where there's a number of municipalities using property tax to be able to pay for the disposal fees. Other questions or comments?
I just wondered when the bond is paid off on the...
When the bonds will be paid off? That's in tab number four, on page, let's see, on page 426. And the bonds will be paid off in 2026.
John, I noticed that it seemed like the electronic waste collection area at the transfer station is...
Disappeared, yeah. That was a state-funded program, and the state actually consolidated to only, I believe, one facility per county, and that was Narragansett Highway Garage. So when that happened, we approached the vendor that was providing that service through the state, and they agreed to continue it at no cost. Because of the worldwide crash in recyclable commodities, they said, "We can't do it anymore." So that, we had to pull that out, or they pulled it out, and residents can still take their material down to the Narragansett Highway Garage. We did ask the state, when they were deciding what facility was going to have E-Waste, we said, "Well, it makes sense that it's at Rose Hill because people are going there anyway." And for whatever reason, they chose to have it at the Narragansett Highway Garage. We've directed people and tried to give them guidance and directions to go down there. So residents still have an opportunity to get rid of their E-Waste, and that's on West Marlin Street across from the wastewater treatment plant.
I think some of the concern was the traffic volume that's already through that, at the transfer station itself, and that they could have a single site like at West Marlin, where it would be more convenient for people to be able to do the drop-offs. I think they've also got a larger space that's dedicated there than we were able to provide at Rose Hill. Any other questions?
That might be it.
If not, that concludes what we were to cover this evening. We've got tomorrow night. We'll do the human service and civic agencies first, and then we'll do the public safety functions, and then we'll go on and finish with the contingency insurances and the pay-as-you-go capital, we'll just touch on that to close out, and that'll be the entire municipal budget, save the schools for next week. I also, at the council's request... I also, at the council's request, provided you tonight with four documents. One is an Excel spreadsheet, which will document the object code detail for the school budget, which is still yet to be adopted or re-adopted by the school committee on the 9th next Tuesday. But the $344,000 in adjustments, I'm not saying cuts, but adjustments to their budget, are included in that line item detail that you have. I also gave you what their February, I think it was February 9th, detailed PowerPoint was that they gave to the school committee on the evening that they presented the school budget before it came to me. And I provided you with the most recent PowerPoint that will go to them for March 9th that reflects the changes that are there. And there was also a single memo that they had put out as to where the changes were in the budget. So, I've given you all hard copies of that. If you want to put that in your budget document, we can punch it for you. But that should be everything that they're going to have available for you when we meet next week. Is it the 10th?
9th.
The 10th. So, with that, that concludes what I need to present this evening.
Here to speak, any final comments? All right, good job. Thanks, everybody.